Welcome to the school committee meeting on this Tuesday, January 26, 2021. I'd like to note that a small group of us are in studio social distancing and that this meeting is being broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook page. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is a reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Before I continue with the agenda, I would like to take this time to read a brief statement. Last week, we were all deeply saddened by the news of the tragic loss of Pam Wood, a beloved teacher at the Greenwood School. I would like for you to please join me in a moment of silence in memory of a dedicated and loved member of our community. On behalf of the entire school committee, I'd like to offer our heartfelt condolences to Pam's family, friends, students, and colleagues. May loving memories ease your loss and bring you comfort. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda is the public comment. If anyone from the public would like to participate, I would ask that you identify yourself with your name and address. Anyone from the public who would like to participate? Okay, I'm seeing none. Moving on to the student advisory. I think we are joined tonight by Liam. And is Maggie with us?
Yep.
Logan, not Liam.
Oh, sorry, Logan, sorry. I got the L right. So Logan and Maggie, how are you? Thank you so much for joining our meeting.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you guys doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you. How was school going?
It's going pretty well. I'm just sitting here all...
Yep, and you guys are both doing the hybrid? You guys are both participating in the hybrid?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Well, okay, well, do you guys have any updates for us, still like what's going on at the high school?
Um, I can start. So in regards to academics, this Friday is the last day of term two. And then, um, report cards are going to be posted in iPass on February 9. And then, in regards to athletics, Mr. Ken is here, so I think he's actually going to do the update on that.
Yes, I think he is too. Thank you, Logan. Do you have anything to add, Maggie?
Um, yes. So just for the other things happening around our school building upcoming, so the Connor Studio, who takes our pictures, will be back for the makeups. Cohort A is March 16th, and then Cohort B is March 19th. And then if any remote students need or wants them, they can reach out to Ms. Chomponté, and she'll set that up for them. Later on in March, we have the juniors will be able to take the SAT in their own school on Wednesday, March 24th. Beginning at 8:00 AM. So be excused from all their fitness and Instagram classes that day. And if you have any questions, anyone with any questions, you can reach out to the guidance department. And lastly, the seniors are actually running a food drive for the Wakefield Interfaith Food Pantry, and it's starting now, and it's going to be running until Friday, February 5th. So if you can donate, that'd be awesome. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Maggie. Just on the food drive, are there sort of boxes or baskets where people can drop off, or do you just give the food to your students to drop off at the school?
Yeah, so, um, I actually have a class with Ms. O'Connor, the advisor for the seniors, so she does have many boxes in her room, so they can be dropped off there, and there will be other boxes that students will be able to bring and put them in.
Great, thank you. Does anyone from the committee have any questions to our, for our student advisors? Seeing none? Okay, well, thank you both so much for the updates, and I hope you guys have a great week.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on with the agenda, actually, do we have a consent agenda? Um, I think you're...
I know, so much problems finding that button, sorry.
No worries.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of November 24th, 2020, and accept the minutes of the school committee's Student Services Subcommittee Meetings of December 9th and December 16th, 2020, and the minutes of the school committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee Meetings from December 10th and December 17th, 2020, as presented.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayner?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Vudrow?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Leakos?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, under Chair Comments, I just have a couple of things that I'd like to share. The first is, I'd just like to remind our house, our high school students and parents about the social emotional health support groups that are being offered at the high school. They're being run by Adjustment Counselor Suzanne Burns and the two school psychologists, Victor Branco and Rebecca Gordon, so if anyone wants any information in regards to that, please feel free to email them. And, and secondly, I wanted to take a moment this evening to provide an update about the ongoing request for discussions about the Wakefield Warrior name and logo. I have spoken with Superintendent Lyons about this issue a great deal, and we both feel that is it, it is a very important topic to many in our community. The school committee and the school department remain laser-focused on handling the daily issues related to the COVID-19 global pandemic and keeping our students and staff safe. With that said, we also recognize that the public deserves to be heard and that a robust and transparent discussion should occur. We intend to work together to place this on an upcoming agenda. However, we are in the early stages of creating our school budget with all hands on deck. I'm hoping to add this topic to an agenda in late March. This will allow the school committee and the administration to continue to focus and prioritize the work ahead, and of course, to continue to work with youth, with the youth council on this issue. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Lyons.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to take, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'm going to take my, my comments out of order. I'd like to just add to just a little bit of information about the mascot.
Of course.
Um, I, I just want to say, in regard to Amy's, Amy's comments about the mascot, you know, I agree completely with her comments. You know, I think that we need to stay focused on, you know, COVID safety, getting our faculty and staff vaccinated at this point in time. That is tremendously important. Um, and, and, but this should not preclude us from reconnecting with the youth council and the student leaders that presented back in October. They did a great job, they did a really nice job, and I think that, that we need to reconnect with them. You know, I, I think our committee did a very, very nice job, um, both praising their good work, but also kind of doing a little coaching and asking appropriate questions in regard to next steps. You know, I think, you know, Suzie asked questions about just clarifying some data, you know, Mike asked questions about just connecting with the Baird family, and, and, you know, Tom Arkham closed out the meeting by just really asking, you know, about kind of just bringing that all together and maybe giving us an opportunity to reconnect on that. So, so I, I really feel like, you know, us acknowledging that there's been a kind of a, a gap in time where we probably should have communicated or connected with them a little bit sooner. But in, in, in our defense, I think we've had a lot on our plate in regard to COVID safety and a number of other things, right? And so, in, in reconnecting with the committee, I think it will give us an opportunity to hear some different perspectives. Um, we have a lot of irons in the fire in February, so if we can reconnect with that group in February, maybe present, um, kind of updated information in, in March, and then kind of summarize that and present that back to the committee, um, and maybe work with the Policy and Communications Subcommittee to think about what our next steps might be in regard to moving to a vote for, for this group. And so, you know, I'm, I'm open for feedback on this, of course, and I'm sure our Policy and Communications Subcommittee is open to feedback as well. The nice thing about this timeline is this is also consistent with what is happening at the state level with the bill that was just passed in January to establish a special commission to change the mask flag and the seal, you know? And so, and I know that, you know, the, the work that they're doing in the six-month timeline that they're giving themselves to really think about options will really think about, it'll give them an opportunity to think about, you know, what it means to make a change, um, but also to, to retire something that has been in place for a long time, but also be very thoughtful about different perspectives that need to be heard, and also how they might kind of make changes in spaces where, you know, the, the Indian on our state flag and the other kind of artifacts that are signified on that flag, that you'll find those etched in bronze around the state, that's, you know, in stained glass around the state, and so there's a lot of moving parts to that. So I, I think that their process will also be an opportunity for us to learn a little bit more as well. So, um, that's the comments that I have about the mascot. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me or comments before I move on to updates.
Uh, Tom and Colleen?
Tom?
No, Colleen, I prefer her first, happy, happy to.
Okay. Um, I was gonna save what I had to say for the end of our comments, but it seems fitting to just, you know, lay it out here. Um, and I had emailed Doug and our Policy Subcommittee about this earlier, but, um, there was a timely MASC discussion. MASC, for those who don't know, is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and they provide a lot of, um, sort of education and discussion around, you know, topics that are sort of hot right now, and this is one that a lot of districts are dealing with. So I joined them last night for a discussion with about 20 other district leaders, most of them school committee leaders and chairs. Some of them have, you know, done this in prior years, some of them are in the process of doing it now. The leaders from Medfield and Walpole sort of led the discussion. Medfield happens to also be the Warriors, so it, it kind of, you know, really aligned with sort of what our concerns are. So, um, and just to support what Doug and Amy have stated tonight, that this, this is a larger discussion, and I think that it would, it would be in our favor to make it sort of a large discussion and that we give it time, and, um, involve the, the larger community, other groups, um, and then get more information, as Doug and Amy said, from our youth council, and, um, the process that the other districts have used seems to follow what we're thinking and, and sort of then modeled from the state and what they're doing. Because depending on what our decision is in the end, there needs to be next steps after that, and, um, that's all part of sort of the discussion and the, the conversation and the decision. So I just wanted to say that, that I feel, I, I stated in my email today that I felt like we were on the right path in, in giving time and space and consideration to, you know, really a large, a larger issue and giving it the appropriate space outside of the immediate action items that we were dealt with right now. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. So, Tom? Hi, Tom.
Yeah, thank you. So I want to thank both the Chair and the Superintendent and, and Ms. Guida for making those, making those comments. I think that's, that's very helpful. I, um, just want to say for, for my part, I raised this, this issue really for the purpose of, of having a public, a conversation, for really for pushing for us to be able to land in a place that the community is comfortable and land in a place that, um, that I guess, quite frankly, we can, um, you know, react to or get back to the members of the community that first brought this up. I would add, uh, just for a point of, of recollection, prior to the youth council bringing this up to, up to us, we should recall, we received probably half a dozen or so emails in August from, from members of the community, from parents, taxpayers, and high school alumni of raising this issue as well. And I just felt that lots, that time had passed, um, and the community deserved to hear back from us. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm pleased and very supportive of the, uh, the Superintendent's outline of a plan that brings us to a, to a place where as we can call for, for community input and to appreciate what's going on, not only just in our community, but obviously in, in, in the communities around us as well. So I, I, I thank, I want to thank the Chair and the Superintendent, you know, you know, for pulling, for pulling that out. I also want to say respectfully that I agree with Mr. Lyons also, um, that, that, you know, I was one of those voices back in August and September that, that said, we, we, we have other, you know, really more immediate demands of our collective time. Uh, I don't necessarily, in all due respect, believe that now, that we, we need to get back to routine business, we need to get back to the business of, of, of making, making responsive and, and, uh, deliberative, um, you know, comments and reactions to the community when asked of us. I think this is one of those things, it's a little bit of a hot topic, I appreciate that, it's a dynamic that, um, you know, may be a little, um, of concern around the community, and that's okay. That's, that's why we have open forums and discussions in community-wide conversations, but I'm pleased to see that we have an outline, and I thank the Superintendent for, for providing that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other comments or questions?
Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
You know, if you see me and Greg.
Yeah, we can see you now.
Greg, you can go first, please.
Thanks, Mike.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. I don't really have much to add except also to, um, to say thanks to Amy and to Doug, because as you know, I also voiced my hope and desire to get this back on the agenda and to, and to, um, you know, create a process for additional public input, but, but a process that has an end goal with a vote, with a school committee vote, because I think it really is as important as this is for the community, and we want to hear from everybody. This is ultimately a school mascot, a school logo, and it is the school committee's ultimate responsibility to, to decide whether or not to change it. And, um, so, um, so I'm glad to hear this and appreciate all the comments and look forward to participating in creating a process that works and that's, as, as Amy said, is transparent and, and open. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Mike?
So, uh, yeah, I, I agree with Doug and Amy too, as far as, you know, let's, let's have an end date to this, but, but let's, let's also take the time we need to make sure we all make the most informed decision we can and understand all the aspects behind that decision too. So I, I think late March is, is a very reasonable timeframe to do that, get the input we need. Personally, for me to get up to speed and understand what are some of those facets of things we need to consider as well, so I am all for what you both have said at the beginning of this discussion.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions, comments?
Amy, the only comment I would make is, um, we may want to get Mike and Greg and Darcy the presentation that the youth council provided to us, and maybe some of the emails that were sent to us from community members that had a lot of really good resources in them. I was actually kind of rereading some of the things that we received this summer, and there's some good, um, links to some things that talk about kind of other communities that have done this and kind of the, the general impact that it has, and, um, so we may just want to think about getting those out to the committee since those were kind of presented before, many of them were, or some of them were a part of this group.
Yep, absolutely, I have all that information, I can forward to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the youth, the youth council vote was, I think, my first meeting, maybe Darcy's one of, of the fall, but the, but the materials in the summer, I, I really appreciate it seeing as well. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, same here, I think I missed that cutoff as well, so it would be great to have that presentation.
Yep, absolutely. Colleen?
Amy, I was just gonna add, I forgot to say this, that our friend Dorothy Presser was in attendance last night, and she is going to, since I had joined the meeting, and Doug had, has a link as well, so we will get sort of a, as they call it, a document dump of the process that the other towns had gone through, so we can learn from it, make improvements from it, so that's to come. She's gonna be doing that in the next week, so that will be helpful in our process.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
Any, anybody else have anything that they want to add? Okay, well, thank you so much for all your comments.
Thank you very much for the feedback, everybody. Uh, we will be sure to get you that information. Um, so just jumping back to the, to the head of, of my agenda, you know, so I, I'd like to just jump back to just updates around COVID. Um, our COVID numbers in the last few weeks, um, the week of the Thursday, the 14th, so I, at the end of the day on Thursday, our COVID numbers in regard to the percentage of the positivity rates is, is issued, right, by the state along with the color designation. So on the, on the 14th, I think it's Thursday, the 14th, we were hovering around 8.4%. Last week, the 21st, we were down around 6.5%, so that's positive, you know, we're going in the right direction. Those numbers are still high, and, and we still need to be vigilant, and, and, you know, it's, it seems like we're, the closer we get to vaccinations, the more anxious people get and the more frustrated people get with just wanting to be done with COVID. And so I think we, we too feel that, um, but we, we need to kind of stay vigilant with our safety precautions to be able to stay in school. So that's, we're trying to slow things down, control what we can, and do the best we can every day to keep students in a hybrid schedule, coming in person, and to keep our athletics and extracurriculars happening to the degree that we can control that as well. And so I want to praise our school nurses for continuing to, to support the contact tracing efforts that are happening in town. They've been amazing. I also want to praise our students and our teachers that come every day and due to their efforts to kind of keep themselves safe and others safe, we've been able to stay in a hybrid schedule. So just a quick note on number of new cases, since we updated the community last Friday, we have 17 new cases with 16 students and one faculty member. That brings the total number of cases, this is student and staff cases, um, in Wakefield since September to 201 and 41. That's 201 student cases and 41 staff cases. The number of people in quarantine this week, as of this evening, and so that number I think is going to go up tomorrow, because, you know, I think that there might, might have been an exposure, um, but the number that, that we had, um, this evening, we're at 97 students and six faculty members in quarantine. Because we've been able to contact trace and kind of our, our faculty and have been able to kind of keep themselves safe and be in attendance at schools, we are going to be able to stay in our hybrid schedules for the remainder of this week, um, and we'll see how it goes to open school next week. But we're literally taking it day by day. Um, I have a very quick, um, update on vaccinations. So, um, you, you probably heard from the governor yesterday, um, the state is moving to open a number of new sites and to make the registration process, um, more accessible to all parties that need vaccinations. So right now, uh, we are working through Phase 1, and there will be a clinic here on Monday in Wakefield to, to vaccinate our Phase 1 personnel. And for us on the school side, that is all of our behavioral health clinicians, our counselors, occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, as well as physical therapists, along with our school nurses, some of whom have already been vaccinated because they are working first responder clinics. So that will be a total for us of about 50 personnel, which we're pleased to, to be able to get them into, uh, to be vaccinated on Monday. A number of other faculty have been vaccinated because they have volunteered, um, in clinics, and so, which is great. I know right now the demand to be vaccinated seems to be just through the roof. Um, I think in hearing from our, we had a, a safety meeting, uh, yesterday morning with leaders from the town, Steve Mayo, first responders, chief of police, chief of fire, DPW was present, Joe Conway, Rick Stinson has been hired back to help support our efforts. Tom Walsh was a big part of this, and Ruth Clay reported to the, to the entire group. So it sounds like the demand for the vaccine is really outpacing, um, the supply, right? And so that's, that's what we're hearing right now, and so we're also hearing that, um, you know, everyone is looking to kind, again, get registered and get in the queue, um, but, you know, we're, we're, we're hearing that there are fixed number of doses of the vaccine being kind of distributed to, to towns and municipalities. Um, so Wakefield very smartly joined with a group of communities to get access to a larger number of vaccines, which was, I think, a brilliant move on, on the part of the leadership and on the part of our Board of Health leaders. And so that's going to help people in our town and our Phase 1 personnel to get vaccinated sooner than later, okay? So right now, we are following, um, the guidelines for MassDPH, which you, you can find online, if you just Google, you know, MassDPH vaccinations, or when do I get vaccinated in Massachusetts, you will be able to go to the link or go to the site, and they will describe exactly who is in Phase 1 and who is in Phase 2. And so, um, we, I think quickly will be moving to, um, Phase 1, or excuse me, Phase 2, bullets 1 and 2, and that information you can see there as well. So other information, we continue to test faculty and staff on Sunday mornings here at the Field House. This past Sunday, we had 103 people tested, we had one positive case, um, and so that's, I think, going well, and that is part of our, has become part of our mitigation and safety procedures that we're taking, um, to give timely responses to teachers, to let them know that they're, um, negative or positive, mostly negative, knock wood, so that they can come to school on Monday. So that's where we're at there. We are still working, um, on pool testing. The state and, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, is really trying to promote pool testing for districts in the state. And so they are, um, there have been, there have been a number of changes to the frequently asked questions and some of the sticking points, um, that some districts have had in, in their willingness to commit to pool testing. So for us, I think the major sticking point at this point, I think, is just the antigen tests that are being used to confirm positive cases. So we have a meeting scheduled with our nurses for, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning, and we, we are going to convene, um, a small group, myself, the Assistant Superintendent- and we we are gonna convene a small group, myself, the Assistant Superintendent Cara Moro, and our lead nurses are gonna get together at the end of this week to make a decision to see if it's in Wakefield's best interest at this point in time to prioritize pool testing, right? There's there are some positives and there are some some challenges as well. And so more information to follow there. But that that's kind of my updates. I don't know if anyone has any questions before I move on to the Student Opportunity Act.
I just had one question.
Of course.
The seventeen new cases.
Yes.
Is that as of when?
That's as of this evening.
Oh, this evening, okay.
That, yeah, so the seventeen new cases is as of this evening.
Okay.
Right? So we we will get a letter, a community update letter out to the community tomorrow evening.
Okay.
So and there'll be more information on students in quarantine and also positive cases.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Thanks, thanks, Amy. And thanks, Doug, for the update. I just wanted to add, you know, the work that that you and the staff are doing on this is really, I mean, it's just worth, again, saying thanks to everybody for the extra effort that they're all putting in. I just noted that today the CDC released a report around schools, and it's it affirmed what we've been talking about, at least since I've been back on the school committee. In some, it said, quote, "The preponderance of available evidence indicates that in-person instruction can be carried out safely as long as mask-wearing and social distancing are maintained." And I just think, you know, that those caveats, but that affirmation are so important to keep repeating and assuring to the community as we work through these difficult issues. And my other question was, in an ideal world, the teachers themselves, you know, the the bulk of our staff who are working directly with students would be prioritized as well for vaccinations. And I think there's an effort among school superintendents and other public education leaders to advocate for that. So I was just wondering, Doug, is this something that we could lend our voices to as a community or you as our our superintendent to put teachers themselves higher up the list for vaccination priority?
Thank you for your comments, Greg. So the North Shore superintendents, along with the Merrimack Valley superintendents, have kind of joined together and signed off on a letter. So that letter, myself and the WEA president, William Carvajal, signed off on the on this letter in support of teachers being moved up or prioritized in in kind of getting vaccinated sooner than later, right? And so I I don't I don't know a teacher in any position in our district that does not have a desire to be vaccinated sooner than later. And so and so Will and I have signed off on this letter. The letter is going to the governor. And so that's that's been kind of where we are at with that. So we think that that is us using our voice and joining with our professional organizations, as well as 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 the union leaders, to say that this is really something that's critically important to keep us in an in-person schedule. Thank you, Greg. So before I jump to the Student Opportunity Act, I just have one other comment before I leave just my updates. So in in the letter that we put out, and so at the end of the letter, we've added a link to make donations to the food pantry, okay? And and the reason for that is because when we are able to support the food pantry as a community, we're supporting our students and and our families, right? And so, you know, we are serving meals and here with our food service department, and we are kind of getting meals out on on Wednesdays. And and that's supporting students and families. And I think we're hovering around, Christine BuFagna will probably have a a more accurate number, but I think we're hovering around three fifty, Christine, is that right?
Yes, just the other day, we served a hundred and twenty families. So we serve twice a week on Mondays and Wednesdays, and it's well over a hundred families per day.
Okay. And so so that that also works. And we're also serving our students, you know, lunches at the end of the day, which I feel like is, so our our numbers are going up and up, and so this demand is is increasing. And I think, you know, when when families are not accessing our food service department for support, they're accessing the food pantry. And so, you know, for us, this just isn't me being politically correct in trying to to support an organization. This directly supports students and their ability to be fed and come to school and and ready to learn. And so it's really critical, I think, for us as a learning community, to to really acknowledge that and to talk about what of kind of critical partner the food pantry has been for us. But I'll I'll leave that there. But if you're interested in donating, there's a link on the letter that we've been sending out. But that's it for my updates. I can jump to the Student Opportunity Act, and I think we're gonna move through these slides quickly.
I don't know if Mike has something to add.
Mike, do you have something to add in regard to?
Yeah, I was going to, sorry. So, yeah, there's after-school programs that also involve the food pantry right now. And obviously, families come here. So certainly, we, it's all appreciated as a member of the board of the food pantry, the great support that we continue to get, because it makes a a big difference in our ability to get more food and better quality food as well. So it's it's much appreciated by all of us in the pantry. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. So Kara and I are going to quickly present about eight slides in regard to the Student Opportunity Act. And so I'm just trying to click.
Give it to Kara, she'll fix it.
You think Kara can make it work? I bet she can.
I bet you she does.
I'm gonna try, I don't know, magic fairy.
I bet she can. There you go. The magic touch. Wonderful. So, you know, one of the things that we wanted to do is just to kind of do a little context setting. So the Student Opportunity Act, this information or similar information, we'll talk a little bit more. Kara, can you go to the next slide and then we can jump jump back to this? So the Student Opportunity Act was was a bill that was sponsored by the Senate Ways and Means Committee. Jason Lewis and Alice Peish, Representative Peish, there have been kind of fierce leaders in this space to kind of to to make Chapter Seventy, the formula for Chapter Seventy, more equitable, okay? To kind of better meet the needs of special education students, better meet the needs of funding to support special education, social emotional learning, counseling services, as well as transportation, right? And so there's there's a part in here, a component for English language learners. There's a part for low-income students, and it's also looking to fully fund charter reimbursements. And so, so when SOA was passed, and so now you can go back to the first. So when the the Student Opportunity Act was passed, what it did was it gave more resources, more funds from the state via Chapter Seventy to districts. And so some districts, it was a profound adjustment in their Chapter Seventy budgets. For us in Wakefield, it was not profound. It was just, it's kind of a small, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In context, we have a forty-three and a half million dollar budget. And so, of course, we will put every penny to good use here. And so in just in in regard to context setting, so initially, we were supposed to kind of respond to the Department of Education last April to to share with them what our plan was and how we would spend the hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so they extended that to this January so that districts could get back in school, to get back into teaching and learning and really figure out what kids needed and what districts were able to do before they specified what their plans would be. So I I've worked with Kara and the curriculum coordinators, and we've developed some focal areas. And just to be clear again about the context, and I'm channeling my best Christine BuFagna. Doug, we we'll spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for intervention services in about a week. And so when we're looking at scale, doing it on scale, right? And so that's just a context piece. But at this point, I can turn it over to Kara.
Sure. Thank you. So that is the elementary intervention program. Like Doug said, I think we would love to be as widespread as possible, but we did kind of focus in on the elementary level at this point, thinking about what was asked for us in terms of how we would spend the money, thinking about a like a longer-term plan, as well as what we could start up this year. So I'll just go back to, I think, what I've talked a lot about this year is a huge focus at the elementary level has been trying to create consistent structures, equitable services across all of our four elementary schools. And I think the I think the elementary principal group is working together really well this year, doing a lot of collaboration. The the group has turned over a bit, which has, I think, caused some different things to be happening in each of the buildings. But I think the group that we have right now is really committed to creating equitable experiences across the four elementary schools. So that has been a real focus area for us, probably going back to last spring and then summer, in the summer, too, just heading into this year, knowing that it was gonna be a challenging year and that we would have our students for not as much time in front of us, and that we needed to ensure that all of our students were being exposed to the same curriculum priorities, that pacing was kind of on a consistent level, and that our our routines and we're consistent across all. So I would say that collaboration piece started this whole process, and we've built in curriculum planning meetings each week where grade-level teachers across the elementary level will get together and they'll plan out what they're doing for the week ahead for live instruction, and then what they're doing for asynchronous instruction. So that has really helped us to understand from a starting point what our students are being exposed to and what they're being taught, so that we can then assess where there might be gaps or and how we might fill those. Along the lines, too, we've been doing our best. Data collection this year has been challenging at best, just trying to get a sense of where students are at. We did some fall benchmarking with students where we're really looking on the major focal ports points for reading instruction, looking at fluency, word accuracy, comprehension skills, and just trying to get a sense of of our students in in some data points, but also really looking for teachers' expertise and their observations within the classroom as well. We've also, back in the summer, tried to prioritize and really vet what what resources we were gonna be using, so that there was consistency there across the elementary level as well. So with the curriculum planning meetings, we had, you know, as much data collection as possible. And then most recently, we've been looking to create a consistent structure for building-based data team meetings so that we could progress monitor, you know, just really get a sense of where our students are at and how how they're performing this year in comparison to their peers. And really to keep an eye on our students that we feel like might be falling behind. Now, our our definition of that this year is is kind of different. It's going to require a lot of conversation because we had, we're we're really trying to tease out our students who are performing below grade level, whether that's an exposure issue or a disability-related issue. So we're trying to tease that out at those meetings. So those have just started up across the elementary level. That was a big process to plan and to be thinking how we would structure those. And from those meetings, from the building-based data meetings, we wanted there to be a plan that could come out of them, that we're we're looking at our our students, we're looking at where they're at and what they need, and trying to zero in on on how we can build in more face time with our teachers. So that's where this comes into play. It's a, you know, I think we're at a big picture point right now in terms of our ideas and how we can make this work, but I do think it's something that will evolve over time. I think it's something that will continue to refine and have in place in years to come, because a lot of what we've been talking about is the students, the curriculum shifts that we've had to make, the the students who are presenting with some gaps, that's not just gonna be, you know, fixed in a year, and then we go back to the way things were in September. I think we need to have a longer-term plan for how we're going to continue to to readjust and support students based on this past year. It'll probably be, you know, almost a year and a half as we get into next school year. So this this slide really just breaks down the, you know, just again, trying to start on on small scale. Doug had to settle us down because we could, we could spend that money and more in a really quick way, just because we're trying to focus the intervention for after-school hours at this point, because what we'd really like to do is hire our own our own staff to run after-school groups after we've identified students who are performing performing below grade level in literacy and math. And and we'd like to run those groups after school. So that, of course, you know, that costs money for services, service delivery and hourly wages, as well as resources for intervention. And then I just wanted to to say that, you know, we'll probably present more. We haven't gotten this off the ground yet. Our goal, we have a a pretty aggressive timeline, just trying to get these started, looking at starting with grades one and two. Our first data meetings just just got off the ground, and we're looking at a February start, so I'll probably have more to report later on. And then in the area of math, we we were targeting grades three and four. And then counseling is a priority as well, just again, thinking about the social and emotional needs of our students, but we haven't completely flushed out how that will look. We've weighed the pros and cons of of thinking about after-school direct service related to counseling. And then we've also thought about additional time to consult with families or to consult with with teacher groups, just trying to get a sense of where students are and what they might need. So so I think the counseling piece is something that we need to flesh out a little bit more. The next slides, I won't go, because I know I think, I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight, but we just wanted to, for the committee, to just map out the way that we submitted our proposal and the different commitments that were within our Student Opportunity Act. I don't know if I want to say like application, but what we what we submitted to DESTI. It was broken out into different commitments. And so we gave a little more information on, you know, how it's important to focus on student subgroups that were using resources and evidence-based programs to close gaps, that were not just, you know, choosing random things, that we're really being thoughtful about what we're using for resources to support student gaps. And so we just listed out some of the things there. And how we're going to monitor success. You know, we're envisioning six-week intervention sessions with a midpoint check-in and then a potential regrouping of students before heading into the next six-week session. And at the end of that, which we're thinking will probably be in May, we'll have our eye on a summer program and how we might put together a summer program that will support our students in preparation for next school year. And then just the the family piece, too, just engaging our families, talking, when we identify students who would benefit from or who would need this support, just how we're going to to work with families to hopefully guarantee their their participation. It's not easy these days, but that will be something that we'll really want to have some heavy outreach in working with our families to make this a priority. And then also just highlights our collaboration with Wakefield Academy. We we picture working closely with Wakefield Academy on a summer academic enrichment program as well. So I I moved fast. Before we go into the budget piece, I just want to, I should probably open it up for questions, just in terms, because I did go pretty big picture at this point, just thinking about what our focus areas are, which are really just to get more time with our students and try to use whatever information we have this year to start to flag students that we think might be falling behind and and build in some more teacher face time with guidance from our instructional leaders at the elementary level.
I I think I would just add a little, just one piece, is that you heard Kara allude to this being one component of of kind of intervention services. So we're looking to kind of get something going after school, outside of the school day in the spring. We're looking to have summer resources available for students, and we're looking to have resources in the fall available for students as well. And this is to address learning loss and and so and to try to meet students where they're at, to kind of catch them up and to kind of to make sure that students are not falling through the cracks during this very difficult time. So we're we're sharing a part of a of a plan So we're we're sharing a part of a of a plan that's part of a bigger intervention plan that will go um over kind of the spring, summer, into the fall, and also into next spring. And so this is also going to be connected with the work and kind of feedback loops that we'll be kind of working with our student services subcommittee. You know, um Dr. Burns has graciously given us some feedback on kind of our spring intervention model. Um, I appreciate the feedback um that you've given, Darcy. I think um I I think your your, because of your expertise, I think you're you're going faster than I think we're able to move right now. But I I think your feedback for us has been very valuable, just as a starting point, and we will continue to seek your counsel. Uh, but that's that's where we are.
Um, thanks, Cara. Um, I just, so this this um intervention takes place outside of our regular special education services and students that are on IEPs, right? So this is this is like a s- a different subgroup of students that aren't receiving current services.
Right.
Or does that sometimes cross over?
Well, so a- again, I I'm we're trying, you know, to to create criteria, but also knowing that we're going to probably need to be flexible case by case.
Yeah.
I think what we found from um debriefing with the principals after their first building-based data meetings, uh they found that we were originally looking at like the lowest performing ten percent of each class. And we were averaging that's probably three to four students per class who are who are performing where we would like to see them. And in debriefing with the principals, um they had identified that that luckily the the lowest performing uh ten percent in classes were already identified by either a reading specialist or a special educator and receiving services. So we were, you know, we were glad to see that, that there wasn't anybody that was a major surprise at this point.
Right.
Um, which is what, you know, I think we're looking for. So then we kind of said, all right, well, what if we look at at the lowest twenty percent? Because I think what what would be ideal to really get a tiered system in place. Um, in addition to the consistencies around um, you know, data team meetings, we're also looking at consistencies around when and why we offer um what we might call tier-two support, when a student might not be performing where we want them to in general education. And so as a first step, we might set we might set up time with a reading specialist or an interventionist. But I think what what work that we need to do across the elementary level is just trying to identify um what that criteria is for that first referral. How um how long does a student work with the reading specialist before moving back to gen ed or moving on to a maybe a special ed referral? And and what are the targets of that instruction? And are they are they um are they in line with what um what the data is showing and what's happening in the classroom? So um, so I think that in our ideal world, we would identify students that maybe are falling, you know, just below uh grade level, but this would be a first intervention step um with, you know, students with like needs in a group targeting um literacy or math skills that we're we're seeing gaps. And then progress monitor, and if if the student isn't moving the way we would like them to, um then having greater discussion about more intense interventions or special education support.
Okay, great.
If that helps. So a- again, it will evolve. We're kind of just have uh trying to figure out our starting point.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, Mike?
Mike, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Darcy?
Yeah, I'll just, um, thanks, um, Doug, for those comments and and I am um looking forward to continuing to provide feedback. I I think one of the most important pieces in that bill is the evidence-based practice component of it. And the good news is the, there is a lot of information coming out from DESI regarding early literacy and regarding research-based assessments and interventions. So through the ma- it's Mass Literacy um website. So that would be a good place to refer to as you're planning out the details of this. They they're they're providing guidance. And there's also a considerable amount of money coming into the state of Massachusetts to to support this effort from the feds, so um, so that's another um interesting component. There's a lot of um I um support being directed towards all of this across the state.
Absolutely. I think one of the things that um, one of the recent things that we're we're trying for is um that DESI put out a a grant focused around um early literacy screeners and we had adopted or or we had made a decision to move from Ames Web to to ra- the rapid screener um over the summer, which um qualifies as is a early dyslexia screener. And and they're offering, um, you know, they're offering a grant uh around that. So we're we're applying, you know, I don't know if we'll get it, but we're trying.
Yeah, no problem. Good, that's awesome.
And and again, thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions before we we move on?
So a- as part of the process of us presenting this to school committee, um, this, not only do we need to submit information to the Department of Ed, which these slides outline the information that has been submitted. And so what we need from school committee is your kind of a motion to support this work, this intervention work as we move into the spring.
Want me to go ahead and motion?
Uh, yeah, if nobody else has any other questions or comments.
Yep, we can move forward with the motion, Suzy. Thank you.
Okay. Move that the school committee accepts the Student Opportunity Act as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Leakos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we just have two other items left on on the agenda for superintendent remarks and reports. Um, next up is our Program of Studies, and I'd like to invite Amy McLeod and and David Robinson to just talk about uh the changes that have been made to the Program of Studies.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me here tonight. Um, so we just want to go over a few things uh for the proposed changes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Program of Studies. Um, before we really get into it, overall, there have been very, very few changes. I think just given everything we just talked about, um, and the challenges that we're facing with uh mental health and social emotional issues and um and things like that, that now really wasn't the time to make too many drastic moves in the uh in the course offering. So um, so I'll start with that, so it shouldn't be too too long to get through these. Um, as far as the the chart goes that I had sent forward, um, before the subjects start in the program, we have an introduction and one of the pages there covered um the definitions of the instruction at very various levels, whether it's college placement, honors, AP. Uh, and the department leaders and admin decided that we should probably review that and and update that a little bit. So that was one thing we did want to point out. Um, and the the reason for doing that is basically to to streamline um the explanations of those different levels of courses, um to clarify the expectations at at those levels um and to make sure they align more with the core standards, the common core standards. Uh, so basically, you you would descriptions show um the content itself wouldn't be different. It's more of the instruction um with the with the college placement level being something that's, you know, geared towards students who thrive with a little more structure um in in guidance and then the AEP and the honors level with maybe some of the thrives a little bit more of the independent environment. So I just wanted to touch base or point that part that part out before we go over with the individual subjects. Um, so uh we, again, we've done with a lot of changes, but to go through some of the departments in English, uh, we did change the uh Journalism and Contemporary Thought classes from a full year to a semester-long course, um mainly to get the chance for students to be able to take these courses. If they're half a year each, they may be able to take both of them. Um, as you know, it's it's hard to find spaces and and schedules these days for electives when they when you have all your other classes. So making them one semester only allows them to have more options of of taking some of these courses. Um, and then let's see, moving on to the math and the business. Just a one small update, the calculus course description was revised. And again, that that seemed to be a little bit similar to what we just talked about with the description of the different levels and leveling of that. So it's kind of a streamlining, um combining of of descriptions from last year, a fairly minor minor change. Um, one of them that would be a little bit bigger is that the title of the marketing education class is switching to social media marketing um for many reasons. I think one obviously is to generate some more interest in in the business electives um and just acknowledging where we're at this time of of our lives here. So um, obviously, the uh social media marketing is is taken off um exponentially over these years. And so to kind of align the course offerings to with the changes that we're facing and experiencing, uh, we thought that might be something that would be helpful to address and to and generate some interest. Um, that being said, um, not, I was a math financial guy myself, but uh we are taking accounting out for next year, so nothing to uh, nothing against counting, but uh obviously it's an important subject. But again, um, to offer more sections of a generalized, um, you know, intro to business overall course um and some things like that, we're trying to get more students to jump in there um and draw that interest. Uh, let's see. So moving along, some of the other departments here didn't have any changes. Down to the social studies, um, it's kind of a social studies, English combination class, but it's in the social studies section. Uh, the Diversity Leaders Class, so that has been, the title has changed to Conversations in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Um, so in the, in addition to just changing the course title, we have uh some staff, Jason PV, Margaret Messier, and Glavia Smith, that have done a lot of work on planning what that class will look like next year. So we're really excited to kind of update that and to have a new perspective on on what that course covers. Um, the descriptions in the in the book, I can just read a couple lines, just to kind of get you a sense of it. Um, as we grapple with complex issues of individual identity, race, structure of power, students will acquire the necessary skills to have constructive conversation centered around productive deliberative discourse. The course would be centered around a seek-to-understand model, and students will ultimately leave the course with a better understanding of themselves, different experiences of others, and how to use their voices to positively impact their community. So um, just to give you kind of a description of that, um, we're also have the ability to offer two sections of that. So if there is a high demand for that, we'll be able to offer uh more students. We're we're looking forward to being able to do that. Um, and I think that's um, that's really it for that that department.
Hey, Dave, can I?
Yeah, sure.
Can I add a couple things about diversity?
Please do, yeah.
Uh, diversity teachers are coming to present to the school committee, I think, at your next meeting. So they're gonna talk about some of the work um that they've done this year to get to that place. So you'll have more information coming on that course. Um, and I think it's really important to note that a lot of the changes came from the students who were in the course this year. Um, so the teachers actually worked with the student, the current students, um, to really talk about what the changes they'd like to see in the course and how they'd like the course to be more available uh to more students uh in the s- in the student body, which I think is great, so.
Amy, can you just, i- is it okay if I just ask, uh, I just wanted to prompt you, Amy. I I agree with you along that line. Um, because historically, the course was only offered to to seniors, was it? Uh, or juniors or a li- more limited number?
Historically, there was a um, there was a selection process to get into the course. And it was about being diversity leaders versus having a course um di- on diversity that was open to all students. So there was a selection process. Um, and every year, there was sort of a conversation around um how students were selected or why students were selected, why others weren't. Um, so the teachers, the students, um, and quite frankly, the administration feel like it's an important class to have open to all students and to have those opportunities built in. Um, so um, that, I'm laughing at Dave's dog, sorry. I just.
Oh, I can't see it, I can only see you.
That, um.
Sorry, it's a rescue dog, we just got last week, so.
So so, yeah, Cara, so that'll be sort of a big, that's a big change and.
Yeah, I just thought that was a really important point, that it's just gonna be available to to that many more students, which is great.
And I and I know they'll talk about that one when they speak.
Yeah.
Committee soon, so.
Thank you.
Point, thank you for mentioning it. Someone is there?
I have a question, uh, David and and to Amy too. So uh, let's assume for argument's sake that this was a normal year, David. What would you likely have done to change things in a normal year? And then the second part is, what is something you decided to change this year that you wouldn't have perhaps thought of, but because we're coming through what we'll describe as an abnormal year, you decided to make modifications?
So could I just add that, like, the process of what we do to change courses? So this isn't really an, I want to say that most of this is not administratively driven from the top, right? I think that um, course, the course catalog comes from the departments. Um, and so the department leaders, the department coordinators, along guided with the curriculum coordinators, sort of um elicit feedback from teachers, uh, get a sense of what's working, what's not working. Um, and they bring those changes, they meet with Dave and I, um, and that's how we put the course catalog together. Um, I, so I, having said that, I think that would be a really, you know, we could kind of explore that conversation a little bit deeper, um, and you'd probably get very different um uh answers across the board. I I do know one area that that's been kind of um pushed to the side right now that we want to kind of uh come back to is really, and Dave touched on it, is uh exploring um some of the options with the school store and entrepreneurship and business opportunities. I think that uh there are partnerships, there are organizations out there that will work with schools to develop uh entrepreneurship programs, um, programs like Nifty, um, that really talk to kids about marketing uh and sort of in a live context. And I know that's an area of growth for us. Um, it's just not a high pri- priority this year based on where we are with COVID, so we hope that we'll be coming back to that at some point. Um.
Anything that you uh, that COVID caused you to think about doing, Amy, that you perhaps might have not thought about before? Or at least put up at the top of the list. Let's show it, okay?
Um, it just, I was, uh, COVID's made me think about so many things that I've never thought before. So many things.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, actually, my student, my my children were making jokes that I invented the word cohort this weekend. That was the joke in my house, that I invented that word. So I don't know how you can get that out there in the dictionary, but I did not come up with it. Um, no, I, you know, I don't know. I I think that's a hard question. I think that it's definitely caused us to slow things down um and to really look deeply at what we're doing in the courses that we currently run. Um, and I think that it's caused us to relook at our maps uh and to sort of um look at priority standards in each uh content area, and that's that, there's a silver lining to that, right? Um, even though I know everybody's stressed and I know parents who are who are listening to this are stressed about um how much their kids are learning and the pace at which they're learning. Um, every high schooler across this, you know, entire country is struggling with that right now. And I think that idea and that ability to kind of look deeply um and have teachers look deeply and prioritize what's most important for kids to get out of every course, um, I think that's the work that we're doing this year. Um, the next part of that will be, as we start up in the fall, right? How do we sort of make up, uh, not 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 charge full steam ahead, but how do we think up of uh, how do we think of making up some of those gaps um as we move forward? So I'm not, I'm not really sure that's answering your question, Mike, but that's kind of the work.
No, no, no. I think my ultimate question is, you know, you talked about the silver lining and I've mentioned it many times. What have we learned through this experience that changes your mind about how we design our curriculum going forward in any way?
Yeah, and real quick on that point, from a guidance standpoint, um, going into the year, the the goal is and has been um to review kind of the guidance curriculum that we do here at the high school and um to kind of take a step back and say, okay, what do we do per grade level um now? And what's working, what can we add, what can we tweak? Um, and so that's been kind of a year-long goal to assess throughout this whole year with the guidance department, and we have meetings about this. And I think what we've realized, um, as we're preparing what a curriculum would entail, this year has pointed out areas to focus on, as far as the social, emotional, the, you know, the um organizational skills, the um, you know, self-discipline, the the motivational piece, the resiliency. And there's so many pieces that came out that are are here now that we're dealing with that, you know, I think would be helpful if people had the ability to do those things at any time. But now it's almost like forcing it or or showing it even more so that how important it is to have those types of skills. And so I know that that's come up a lot as we plan our uh curriculum moving forward. So it's a work in progress, but as far as how this year's affected direction, that would be, that would be an example.
Yeah, great, thank you both very much, appreciate it.
Uh, there was just one other department, real quick, um, with the TV and Visual Arts Department, the Film Photography.
David, David, I'm sorry, it looks like Greg has a question.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, no, not at all, thank you, Mike. Um, I just wanted to add, uh, um, you know, that I really commend um uh the team and Amy and David and and the teachers at the high school for creating the conversations uh around diversity, equity, and inclusion. That course just seems to me so timely, um, so important, um, on so many levels. Uh, you know, i- in the world we're living in, as young people are kind of trying to learn how to understand our differences. You know, in the world we're living in, as young people are kind of trying to learn how to understand our differences and, and how to, how to manage them. But also it really speaks to that time in adolescence when young people are really exploring their identity and, and sharing with one another, you know, who they are. So boy, I would have loved a course like that when I was in high school. And also just commend you for making it more widely available to students. I suspect that that course will be in high demand, so just wanted to add my thanks for that.
Thanks, Greg.
Great.
I just had a quick question for Amy. It's kind of like a follow-up question from last year in regards to the chemistry. I know that this was the first year, I believe, that chemistry was a requirement for all sophomores. And I know that I raised the question last year, like what type of plan was going to be in place if some of our students may not be ready for that chemistry class? And I know that you had mentioned that some kids would be able to have that option to opt out. So with that question, so with that said, I guess my question is, how many students did actually opt out this year? And what classes did they take? And then also, are you anticipating, because of the learning gaps as a result of COVID, you know, if, you know, are you anticipating maybe that number would increase for some students may not be ready to move on to chemistry their sophomore year?
So the second part of the question, I, no, I don't. I don't think that there's going to be any more significant gaps in that transition than there will be any other place in the school. And I think by, again, identifying priority standards and by thinking about essential learnings at every course, I think our teachers are doing a really excellent job in terms of meeting kids where they're at and moving them along the progress in the curriculum. In terms of chemistry this year, we had actually three students opt out. And those three students are in a program focused on students with significant behavioral needs. And based on a number of factors, the liaison, Mary Beth Eber, our special ed coordinator, felt like chemistry was not a good match for them. They are in environmental science. And I think that overall, speaking to Jennifer Thomas about where, how, how chemistry is growing and checking in with Sherri Prosperi and, and that team, I'm actually, I see those chemistry classes quite a bit. I think that the, the feedback so far has been that it's, it's, it's working really well. I think there's a lot of pieces that are making it work. I think that the pace and the scope of this year has actually helped, as I said. When you think about identifying priority standards and what students need most and how to meet, how to help all students access the curriculum, thinking about those priority standards really helps. I think also that the chemistry teachers, along with many of the teachers at the high school, have been doing some PD work with Emily Pat around inclusion and engagement and thinking about assessment differently. So that's really helped teachers to sort of tweak their instruction to better help, help more students access the content. And so I think the work with those teachers, with Emily, has been pretty significant in chemistry. And I would say that the three chemistry teachers seeing their classrooms and the way that they're presenting content has changed significantly over the, over the past few years. And we're still able to provide co-taught sections in support, supported classes with paraprofessionals across the spectrum of chemistry classes as needed to, to meet the need of our special education students. So I, I would say overall, given the number of students in the sophomore class and the fact that we have three opt-outs and that it seems the, the feedback from the teachers in terms of the progress and the forward motion of the course, it's going pretty well.
So when the students are ready to pick classes for next year, I, I don't even actually know when that is, but when that does occur, will teachers have a better sort of gauge as to where the students are? Especially with the math moving forward with the chemistry for our freshmen who are going to be sophomores next year? And, and, you know, when would those decisions be made if they technically would want to opt out? If, if, or recommendations, recommendations would be made on their behalf? If, if the chemistry, if they weren't ready for chemistry at, at the end of the school year just because of the COVID learning gaps that may have occurred?
Right, so I don't, I'm not sure that, so, so lots of questions in there. First timeline, Dave has put together a timeline despite all the challenges of COVID. I'm, I'm really proud to say that I think we're only a few weeks behind where we were last year, Dave. So, you know, we, we have a pretty aggressive timeline in terms of getting our, getting ourselves moving after the holidays to say, okay, we need to get on track with course selection as we did for last year. And we'll go through the same steps that we did last year and we've done in previous years, having teachers conference with, with students, making recommendations for the following year, guidance counselors meeting with students both as groups and then individually and, and going from there. In terms of thinking about students whose, whose individualized needs may require different scheduling, the same thing, liaisons would be meeting with families, consulting with guidance counselors to support students who may need to make different choices in their schedules. I don't believe that COVID is going to have a significant difference in that, nor do I think that this year what's happening in math classes is going to make a significant difference in the trajectory of our course progression. Our course progression, the, the, the plan is to keep it as it is, knowing that we're going to have to make shifts in curriculum, knowing that we're going to have to make shifts in the skills and strategies that all students are going to need based on gaps that may exist because of time on learning and gaps in due to COVID. But, you know, I think, again, I think I want to commend our teachers for the work that they're doing to try to identify and move students along. I don't, you know, I, I, I can't say that, that students or teachers don't feel like they're maybe not covering as much, right? But I think this idea of coverage is sort of a antiquated notion. And we're really talking about are students addressing and learning the standards? And are they acquiring the skills that they need to then sort of progress? So Amy, I don't, I can't predict what that's going to look like, right? But we are on track to meet with kids the same way we did last year and to support them to make choices that are best for them in the curriculum.
Thank you. And then one last question, I'm not sure if you could answer that or not, but meeting with the principals in terms of the budget. The, the secondary teachers at the Galvin and also at the elementary level were able to sort of benchmark where the kids were. Does that, do you, does that happen at the high school? And if so, you know, do we have any data to show if, if, you know, the learning gaps are there through benchmarking? Or does that not happen at the high school?
There, there, and Kara can probably jump in on this as well. Traditionally, there are benchmark tests at the high school and high schools traditionally don't have benchmark assessments. MCAS has become a benchmark assessment for high schools. However, we do have, generally we have common assessments in different courses. And teachers are looking at those pieces of data to kind of see where kids are from year to year. But I don't think it's hardened vast standardized data the way benchmark takes place in elementary and middle schools. That's not, that's not something that traditionally happens in high school.
And Amy, maybe you can kind of get into the same point. I think once we have that data that might, you know, flag a student or, or we might be identifying students that aren't where we want them to be, there's a referral process. But I think at the high school, Amy, you, you still have a, a process where teachers can refer students that they feel like might need. Is there kind of like a, a referral process if, if students maybe are not performing where we want them to be? Or there might be, you know, potential, like special education referral?
Right, so the intervention process is, I would say, related to courses or course selection. And to confuse the two is, I, I think, dangerous, right? All students are able to access our courses and our curriculum. That's the goal of an inclusive model of education. However, students who may be struggling either academically or behaviorally or socially emotionally, Dave actually oversees our intervention process that happens weekly. Where teachers or counselors or, and really any trusted adult in the building can refer a student to, through the intervention process. Where, where a student, you know, is, is, is student's case is kind of presented and discussed in a team approach to sort of putting a plan in place to support the student.
Yeah, thank you.
If there are.
I, I can't, does anyone else have any questions or comments? We can't see the full screen, so it's hard for us to, there we go, okay. Any other questions or comments? I, I actually, are you guys done with your presentation or do you have more to provide?
You know, that was, that sums up, there's a couple of descriptions that were noted there, but just very, very minor wording tweaks. So I think, I think we covered what we needed to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, I think at this point, if there are no further questions, I think we would.
Yep, do we have that motion, Suzie?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the 2021-2022 program of studies as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy and David, thank you very much, I'm sure. If you need to scoot and attend to your rescue dog and Amy, your children, of course, you're, you're more than welcome to.
I was the same thing, thank you.
Amy, man, I noticed you still have the shades on, should I be?
She's never going to live that down.
I need to find a different.
Ah, crap.
Thank you, David, thank you, Amy, good night.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, last, I'd like to just invite Brendan to give an update on athletics.
Thanks Doug, and thanks for having me again. It's always a pleasure to be on Wakefield School Committee with a great crew of people. So right now, we're seven weeks into the winter sports season. And, you know, I have to say, when we first started way back in December with COVID numbers, you know, going through the roof, with all of our outdoor teams now moving indoors, with all the holidays looming right around the corner, you know, a lot of people were skeptical that we weren't going to make it seven days, never mind seven weeks. So it's, it's been a total team effort. Want to thank all of our parents, students, coaches. Because of the COVID situation and because of, people having to go on quarantine, both individuals and teens, there's been a lot of juggling and canceling and rescheduling games, last minute changes. And our coaches and kids have done a really phenomenal job handling that. I mean, literally, every other day I'm getting a call from one of our opponents that, hey, we had a kid on our, you know, JV basketball team, test positive, we have to cancel a game tomorrow. And I'll call our coaches and literally hours before the game, I'm calling around trying to get a new opponent. And our coaches and kids have just been phenomenal with kind of rolling with it and doing the best and adapting and being resilient. So hats off to them. Also, Doug mentioned earlier, our, our school nurses and medical staff, they've been phenomenal. So Lisa Gaverty, Rita Perlin, our athletic trainer Sue Corchane. Anytime we have a kid that's close contact of, you know, possibly a family member at home, tested positive or a kid tested positive, they, they've been extremely helpful with contact tracing, working with our coaches to try to see if anybody was a close contact at practices or games and making the best decision, decisions in the interest of all of our kids. Also gonna say hats off to Ryan Boyd and W Cat, all his, his whole crew. I see Ian McDermott and Adam Nessel on, on the call here. I'm sure Bob or Wally's, you know, behind scenes somewhere. They've been phenomenal, live streaming all of our games this year so that our fans and parents at home can watch. Even, I gotta say, give, gotta give a shout out to the legend Tom Stapleton's even come out of retirement. Hump out, it's been a total team effort, they've been phenomenal. During the first half of this meeting, I, I have to admit, I was looking up on my TV because they had a second crew over at Stonemarina live streaming our girls hockey game. So I got a chance to watch that and watch school committee meeting all at the same time, so. W Cat's been phenomenal, just gotta say hats off to Ryan and his whole team, they've been really great. So anyways, jumping to our teams, like I said, it's been very challenging this winter, but they're, they're doing an awesome job. We've had a lot of really highlights and, and kind of special moments throughout the year. Sports that are in session right now, we have boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, gymnastics and boys swimming. Right now, our gymnastics team is undefeated and in first place in the middle sex league. Just had two big wins last week over middle sex rivals Winchester, who's usually a powerhouse in Stonem High School as well. Wakefield's Lola Barrett and Molly Grady are two of the best, if not the best gymnasts in the league. So they're looking to finish strong and really possibly add a championship to, another banner to the, the field house down there. So having a great year. I gotta say, another team that unfortunately I feel like sometimes they get overlooked because our boys swim team, as everyone probably knows, is in a co-op with Winfield. And they compete, Winfield's the host school, so we actually compete in the KBN league rather than the middle sex league. So I feel like they don't always get the publicity they deserve, but they are having an absolutely phenomenal year led by head coach Jeff Boyd. They're undefeated right now, they're three and oh. They just had a huge win last weekend over Triton, who was supposed to be the best team in the league. So they have a really good shot at finishing undefeated this year, winning another championship. The, the Wakefield guys on the team are really doing phenomenal, senior Alex Ken, no relation to myself. Having a great year, I, I wish, I wish, but he's having a great year, the whole team's having a great year. Jeff's doing a great job leading the team and, like I said, they're having a lot of success. Girls basketball, last week had a huge upset win over Arlington, who was rated as one of the top teams in the state. So that was really exciting. Boys basketball had a couple of back-to-back wins over Wilmington and Stonem. Boys hockey, they just had a huge win this week earlier against Burlington, who, for those that don't know, Burlington's always one of the top teams in the entire state. So, you know, all in all, really exciting stuff, a lot of highlights, a lot of good stuff happening right now. Kids are out having fun. We did have a middle sex league athletic directors meeting this morning. A couple of kind of notable agenda items about the winter season. I know one issue, it's been a con, kind of controversial ongoing issue is the no fan, no parent rule. Not just here in Wakefield, but throughout the middle sex league, I know it's definitely a controversial issue. Something that was brought up was the possibility of maybe towards the end of the season, maybe each team's last home game allowing the senior parents in to watch the game. So that's not officially yet. I was debating whether or not even bring it up yet because I don't want to give people's hopes up, but that is something that's being discussed at the league level. I'm sure our parents and definitely our senior parents would be excited about that. Obviously, we get a, you know, it's, it's a discussion, it's going to be a league agreement if it, if it does happen. And obviously, safety is our, our number one priority for all of our families, kids and fans. So definitely have to, you know, circle back with our medical staffs at each of our schools, school leaders and see what happens. But something, something for parents to think about. Another notable change or addition, I guess you can say, it's the winter season. We're trying to do something special for these winter athletes, that there's, there's no state tournament. So it was discussed today, our coaches don't even know about this yet and our kids don't even know about this yet. But the athletic directors in the league are trying to put together a postseason middle sex league tournament for the 12 schools in the middle sex league. Basically be a bracket style tournament over February vacation. The top two teams in each division, freedom division and the liberty division would get buys. And basically, the single elimination, you wouldn't move on in the bracket, losing season's over. So just something, you know, exciting for the kids, you know, to end their, their seasons with. Would be a good idea for the, the winter athletes. So that's a, a little bit of recap of winter sports. The other thing we spent probably two hours talking about this morning was fall two season, which is right around the corner, less than a month away, February 22nd. Fall, as, as challenging as winter has been, I think fall two's probably going to be the most challenging of all the sport seasons thus, sport seasons thus far. The sports in fall two include boys and girls indoor track, volleyball, girls swimming, football, dance. The sports in fall two include boys and girls indoor track, volleyball, girls' swimming, football, dance, and cheer. You know, right off the bat, some of the challenges that we anticipate probably facing are just weather conditions. Some of our teams are now gonna be moving back outside. Obviously, football is a completely outdoor sport. Indoor track, because of the sheer number of kids, we have, you know, over 200 kids on our team. A lot of other schools in the league are in similar situations. We just can't fit all the kids in the fieldhouse at once. Traditionally, and that's under normal circumstances, pre-COVID. Traditionally, our coaches bring, you know, our runners and some of the other athletes outside for practice. Obviously, if we get hit with some snowstorms, that's gonna be an issue. Sometimes our runners run in the halls, that's gonna be off limits this year due to COVID and cleaning. So, you know, that's definitely a challenge for the athletic directors and coaches in the league to try to figure something out. Another issue is just facilities. I mentioned girls' swimming. A lot of the pools throughout the state are either shut down or offering lower capacity. Number of people in there, so that's gonna be a struggle trying to find pool time. The pool that we usually swim at, Malden High School, already told us they're not doing outdoor, outside rentals outside of Malden. So, a lot of schools in the league are scrambling to find pools. Indoor track, as I mentioned, not only the outdoor piece, but for meets. Traditionally, you have meets at Boston University and Reggie Lewis Center. Those are gonna be off limits. So, there's definitely some hurdles to overcome, no pun intended. Competitions, if there's no place, have indoor track competitions, you know. We don't necessarily know what's gonna happen yet. Could just be a season for training, unfortunately. Which I, some of our serious track athletes probably wouldn't mind, so it's segue directly into the spring season. Other sports, dance and cheer, is most likely not gonna be statewide competitions. So that's another thing that we're trying to figure out right now. So, all in all, you know, I feel like, and I think most people feel like, the winter season has been successful so far. You know, we're trying to finish strong, trying to do something special at the end of the winter season for our winter student athletes. But at the same time, we're trying to figure out, as a league, how to kind of overcome some of these obstacles for fall two. So, that's a little recap of winter, and I look forward to fall two. Mike?
Yep, so Brendan, thanks for the update. Yeah, I think we're all glad the kids are playing, and that's certainly the most important thing. And there's still a few that you guys are jumping through, so that's great. Obviously, it's a tough season for all the parents, and you related that, and particularly for any senior parents. So, I do appreciate that. I do have to give kudos to W Cat, but really, all of our competing towns about their ability to set up access for us to at least watch the game. So, some good things, obviously, some tough things for, and once again, it's particularly the parents that are having the biggest challenge, and you know that all too well. So I guess my question is, when do you suspect we will know whether, one, senior parents can go to a game, or parents of seniors can go to a game, and whether this tournament's gonna happen? What's the timeline on that decision?
You know, probably within the next couple of weeks, Mike, to be honest. We only have a month left in the season. So, season ends, spring, excuse me, fall two starts February 22nd, so the winter season ends February 21st. So do the math, where, you know, we've got four or five weeks left. Everything's changing day to day, as we all know. And, you know, as of just a few days ago, someone asked me if there was a possibility of parents, you know, getting into games. I probably would've said, I don't see it happening. In fact, I think I did tell a few parents a few days ago, I don't see that changing. But we had a long discussion about it this morning, you know, as a league group of athletic directors. Obviously, this is gonna have to get brought back to the superintendents. You know, it's gonna need their approval, too. No, no pressure to Doug. Not, certainly not passing the buck. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a Middlesex League decision. We said this at the beginning of the school year. Whatever decisions we come upon, you know, we're gonna agree to as a league. We're not gonna pit school against school, so we're not gonna say, hey, you know, Wakefield's allowing parents in, but Maryland's isn't. Whatever decisions we come up with as a league, we're gonna all stick to and abide to. So, you know, I think we're probably gonna see how the next couple of weeks shake out, see where COVID numbers are at, Mike, and probably make a decision, I'd assume, within the next couple of weeks. And obviously, we have to make a decision in regards to the playoff, if that does happen. But it sounded pretty likely that definitely the playoff sounds like it's gonna happen. There's some room there in February vacation. If you didn't, you know, it's about a week to do it, so we do have a window of opportunity. The parent piece is another discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Does anyone else have any questions for Brendan? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, so thank you so much, Brendan, for all the information. Of course, very thorough, and again, you know, I echo what Mike said about, you know, just, we're just thrilled that the kids are able to play. And, you know, it's wonderful that they've had as many games as they have been able to play, which has been great. So, thanks for all your work, and hopefully, we'll have some positive news in the weeks to come. So, we'll all stay hopeful.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. That's it for my remarks.
That's it, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Moving on with the agenda, budget items. We don't have any gifts, do we, Christine? Nope, and budget reports will be on the ninth.
Right, unfortunately, no gifts tonight.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Subcommittee reports, the finance and facilities subcommittee met last Thursday. We just continued to discuss fiscal year '22 planning and the budget schedule. And we are meeting this Thursday to continue those discussions. Labor and personnel, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Amy. Labor committee met this morning. A couple of topics, one, something that was discussed earlier at the meeting, and I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Aliakos, for bringing it up, that we had a conversation on advocating for teachers to be advanced on the COVID. The vaccination schedule. And Mr. Lyons reported pretty much precisely what he did tonight about the other superintendents. But, you know, we're rallying around that. But labor subcommittee certainly wants to thank and congratulate the administration and the WBA for co-signing that letter and representing Wakefield. We also wanted to thank Town Hall and Mr. Mayo for their continued support of really working to make Wakefield their priority and doing, putting as many resources as they can. So we're obviously very pleased, as Mr. Lyons reported, that some vaccinations will be available for staff as early as next Monday, for the clinicians and therapists and counselors and that. So, we were very pleased to hear that, and certainly very supportive of doing everything we can to move teachers up the chain, so to speak. The other thing that was reported relatively briefly, but some possibilities and some brainstorming around possible schedule changes in light of, you know, the hybrid and in-person experiences that we've now been, you know, five months into it. But as well as what may possibilities be around snow days, the actual snow days or, you know, good old-fashioned snow days. So, some of that discussion also took place. That's a very, very, very brief update. We'll be meeting again in two weeks, February 9th.
Thank you, Tom. Student services, Darcy?
Yes, we are meeting tomorrow morning. We had a meeting scheduled for last Wednesday, but due to the events that took place, we moved it to tomorrow. We'll be reviewing the intervention plan that was shared tonight, and then also talking about the implications for the budget.
Thank you, Darcy. Policy and communications, Colleen?
Yep, we met last Friday, January 22nd. We talked about some proposed handbook policy updates that came down from Dussey, and we'll review those and probably lay those on the table at our meeting on the 9th of February. We also discussed further communication ideas, maybe building a better, more consistent relationship with media, in particular, our newspaper, opening sort of, you know, lines of communication there, so that we're represented in a more equitable way. And then, as we discussed earlier, the policy and communications subcommittee can potentially take on the work of leading our discussion for a mascot logo vote or item. So, reaching out to youth council and whatnot, whatever we decide is appropriate.
Okay.
And we're meeting again on February 3rd.
Great, thank you. Future dates and agenda items, our next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 9th, at 7:30. Any agenda items? If you don't have any now, you can always email me, please. And school committee comments, so I will start with Greg.
Thanks to Amy. No comments from me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, tough week last week. I know our thoughts are all with Pam and her family as well. But I'm sure our community, as we all know too well, will rally around them. So, you know, thoughts and prayers go there. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. Suzy?
I just echo Mike's sentiments and just know that I think all of us are thinking about the staff and the families who knew Pam. I did not know her, but I certainly saw kind of wonderful memories shared on Facebook about her impact on kids and families over the years in both the Greenwood and the Doyle community. So, I would just echo kind of Mike's comments about kind of all of our thoughts are with her parents and her family, and the colleagues and the families who knew her. That's it for me, Amy.
Thank you, Suzy. Darcy?
Yes, I'd just like to echo what Mike and Suzy said. Our thoughts and prayers are with Pam Wood's family and colleagues and all the students who she's impacted.
Thank you, Darcy. Tom?
Just really honestly, yeah, support from what my colleagues have said, and deep appreciation and for the rallying of the community, especially the Greenwood community. My thoughts and prayers are with the Wood family.
Thank you, Tom. Colleen?
Yes, same thoughts as well. On a personal note, my kids never received services from Pam, but I was, because of my association with Author Fest at Greenwood, she became a good friend. And, you know, I always remember getting to the top of the second stairs, and her office was on the left. And she was always just present, you know, and with always a smile on her face, and always took the time to not only say hi to you, but ask you how you are, and how are your kids? You know, I had one student who was at a different elementary school, and she never ceased to inquire about that, because that was her passion, you know, is the kids that need that extra look. And so, just that impact that she had is felt, you know, very far beyond just the students and families that she serviced. And also, just to recognize the leadership, Doug and I had a conversation about this, that, you know, I asked him how the Greenwood community was doing, and I think that, we know this already, but in the hands of Mary Dougherty, our Greenwood nurse, who has been there before I was ever there, and our principal Tiffany Back, it was really just so wonderful to hear what Doug had to say about their leadership, and how they are able to support the students and the staff, and the parents and the families across the district. And that's just something that, you know, you fall back on, and it kind of is like a big, great, big hug for you in these times and for the community. So, thank you to their leadership. It's most profound. That is all.
Thank you, Colleen. I echo everyone, obviously, and thank you so much for sharing your personal stories with her. I did not know her either, but of course, our thoughts and prayers are with them all as they continue to heal during this very difficult time. Doug?
I would just like to give special thanks to our first responders, to our police, and to our fire departments who responded to this event, and also have been so supportive of us. I'd also like to kind of echo what has been said. I'd like to give a special kind of comment and to let Carol and Ed Wood know that our thoughts and prayers, they are the parents of Pam, right? To let them know that our thoughts and prayers are with them and with the Wood family. And so, please know that we are with you. And I'd also like to thank our counselors, who have rallied to support one another. And, you know, teachers are like no other bunch, right? When the chips are down and when things like this happen, they just come out for one another and give in such generous, profound ways, you know? Tiffany Back and Mary Dougherty have been rock solid. You know, Kathy Holland, one of the teacher leaders who really kind of rallied Memorial kind of gathering last Friday evening at the Greenwood School, you know? It's interesting, and through this process, I've got to meet Mr. and Mrs. Wood. I also knew Pam as a terribly frugal teacher. She would not, she treated every penny, Christine Bufagin will be happy to hear this, treated every penny that the school department was spending like it was her own. Her father built all of the radiator covers, so the old, so Greenwood has old traditional steam radiators, which you can hear when you're on a Zoom call, they clang and clack. And so, but they're all covered with these wooden boxes with a metal front, and they were all built. All of them were built by Pam's father. You know, Pam recently wanted to get a sand table for the preschool students that she was serving from Doyle, and was so highly offended, highly offended, that Amazon could charge $275 for a sand table, which we would have purchased in a moment, right, in a moment. She was highly offended, and actually complained enough that her father actually built a sand table as well for students. And so, but she was a people person, and she will be missed. And so I want to thank everyone for their support and for their guidance over the past week during this difficult time, and as well as the WA leadership, who's been remarkably generous in kind of supporting and feeding. It sounds like the whole district, so fantastic. So, thank you. And we're grateful, we're grateful to you all, so thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do. Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of January 26th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you all for watching, and I hope you have a great night.